I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There she is, perfect timing. So you're actually not targeting like school. Okay, start with roll call here, Randazzo.
Here.
Zambou.
Here.
Barber.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Helsor.
Here.
Wernan.
Here.
Weaver. And Dunsmore is not. Alright, do you get a motion to accept the absence of Mr. Dunsmore? And accept the uh attendance attendance taken. A motion, what a motion, a motion.
Is that gonna motion that we don't accept the absence, I can do that.
Yeah, cause this.
We went through this last.
Yeah, we went through that time. So we're not gonna excuse.
She wants to call and you guys.
I haven't raised anything.
None. So, I don't know, somebody must make a motion.
So how we do that?
Make a motion to accept the absence and if everybody says no, it's a no.
Okay, so make a motion to accept uh.
Excuse the.
Excuse the absence. I'll make a motion, anybody second it? Want a second, okay, all in favor? Amy. You want me to go or just let you go? What's that? Okay, I'll find out. I'll talk to Brad. I'll talk to Dunsmore. Okay, I'll update on that. Alright, adoption or amendment of the agenda.
I look weird for the agenda, does it design?
Alright, do you get a second?
I'll say no.
Alright, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Motion carries on that. Okay, everybody get a chance to look over the meeting minutes from June eleventh.
Yeah, I've got a few changes that I don't need to make.
Alright.
On the first page where it says motion by Zambou, seconded by April, excuse the absence.
Yes.
Um, it says three votes against, that was a roll call vote, in the name of the gates and the names should be, are supposed to be listed.
I just need to make a correction then.
Both yes and both no.
Okay, so I have to put all of, all of the, I have to write each individual person's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the.
I'm learning, I'm learning here, yeah, just on, just on roll call.
That's alright, yeah, it just, if you have a roll call vote, then.
What about the rest of the votes, do they all have to be individual votes or? If there's a roll call, we actually call the roll call, it leaves it all here, everybody, okay, agrees, if there's not a vote, then.
If it's a roll call.
Yeah, it was just a motion here.
Like, like when you just approved the agenda, we, we saw a roll call, cause we all approved the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I'll look it up.
See, I just made that change and then we submit.
Very good. And then, um.
So who were the no's?
Uh, and Barbara's one of them.
I was one.
Yeah, you was one.
I was also one.
And Amanda was one.
And then, and Amber.
Amber.
Come on now. If you go down a little farther.
Sorry, you got a little long date.
It says adoption of agenda, motion by Weaver to accept the adoption, seconded by April, opposed by one. And I don't remember who that one was.
Okay.
And then, one more, one more thing.
No, this is perfect.
Um, I don't know, but on the third page, um, where it says comments from commissioner, it said, it said that I expressed concern from the citizens about the lowest rate, I really just asked for the date that it was gonna be done, I don't know if that needs to be changed or not. I'm thinking of what else.
So you just inquire. On dates.
Okay. And that's other than that.
I don't know if they actually told us, do you? So she just. She did express concern, but she just inquired about the dates because people are asking her.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so. We're gonna resubmit the June eleventh meetings with the corrections, and we'll send it over to. Amber in the office. I'll take that. Alright, where is Mr.? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so we have a motion for the approval of meeting minutes from June eleven.
No corrections.
With corrections.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Alright, motion carries on that. I'm going too fast, Rob. Citizens' comments regarding agenda and non-agenda items. So, Mr. Riddle.
It's me. It's me, I'm on. Uh, living on corner Bell River and Pratt. Uh, coming to see if they've solved anything with those flooding issues, I've got a new building, please water. I was told or heard that there's gonna be an engineer hired to come out and shoot the project, haven't seen no one, haven't been contacted by no one. I'm not home all day, so I did not think that's happened yet. Uh, I'm just not gonna wait around till fall, it's too, too uh cold to dig or do anything about it, I'm not waiting till spring. I need to know what's gonna happen here before I make my next move, uh, hope to hear something tonight, or by the next planning commission, within thirty, next month. But that don't happen, then, you know. I'm not wanting to do things like this, but I have to take the legal action between me and the city or me and the builder. Uh, so I'm hoping to hear something tonight, or before the next planning commission. Uh, you know, two or three weeks ago, we had some pretty heavy rain at night, I stayed up till eleven o'clock, I went out in the rain, got some more pictures. Water flood, didn't really get as deep in my barn, it did stand, but it spilled my, into my barn, uh, next to my barn, so it dissipated, but I did have some water on my pig inside the, inside my barn, so. I'm hoping to hear something tonight.
Did you address all the D W or with the council?
My wife called the bar the next day and said, hey, the dessert bowl. Uh, can someone come out and see if there's something clogging, or is there too much water coming in, he told her that. Not the total, I don't have the manpower today.
Just maybe you got something there.
Well, it's, it's really the, um, the council, this is a council issue, not primary issue.
Sure, I wasn't able to get to the council meeting yet, cause I was out in the hall.
That's okay, but, uh, Jamie, you, did the builder come out and talk to you?
Yeah, and we disagree with their solution.
Okay, I thought they were coming back out.
In all the ways. They did, and they offered the same one that they did before.
Which is what?
Just they ditched, a really big one, it was like an eight foot ditch, what they wanted to do, they did that, where that new flats, new houses, um.
Which, which house, sorry.
Uh, it's on the.
The D behind your house, called, they said W is throwing it in south.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a laundry yard and it made the slant even worse. So, I don't, I just, I would, I don't know what type of talking about, so. I.
In the.
Ten.
On Bell River, that is ten?
On that's the first.
Bell River or Pratt?
On Pratt.
It's on Pratt, it's going up to our backyard.
It's the first, the first house on the east.
Yes, on the east, by houses, that's what they're just on.
It's the same bitch that always went through there, they just made it look pretty much all the way down behind the other houses.
Yeah. Yeah.
To the north, which isn't helping me, because everything is from the three foot higher level next to my house now. So, you know, if it's a council meeting, I'll, I'll be at the next one, but I'm just hoping to hear something soon.
Absolutely.
I'm not wanting to go to legal action, but I'm not gonna wait around, uh, you know, that, you know, the last rain, I, I have my doors open all week, trying to dry myself, I'll get. Um, you know, and that's kinda where I'm at, here to see if I get some kind of uh help here. If not, then, not the threat, but I'm not gonna wait around till fall and get the same excuses.
We did approve the engineer from our engineer, the N A, to come out, so fifty nine hundred dollars to do a study, and that was really in two parts. So I expected to come out, but I did, I did, you get help, building that night, let them know that it was approved, whether you got back anybody or not, I don't know, but I made him aware that.
It was just approved last, uh, council meeting, so it's gonna take them some time to get it.
Okay.
I get it, I just, you know, I, I wasn't the last council meeting, I'm just hoping to get some kind of clarity.
Like, I gave him a snapshot again, that we, we gave him permission or we authorized him to, to look at that drainage issue on Bell as well, as shooting the elevations.
Sure.
Make sure that was included, that was also authorized, um, the west, excuse me, yeah, the west side of Pratt, so, ball's in the court, but we, we didn't have it.
Supposedly, you're out of work, you know, I was fixing to get it going, cause uh, like I said, I'm not gonna wait till fall, you know, it's too late to do something.
Orange, man.
Uh, gonna go in spring, you know, that's six months from now, this has been an issue since I started these meetings in February, you know, it's just.
Well, the first meeting you came to was Mary, that's the first meeting that you came to, to tell us about the issue. So. Not, I'm not pushing it off, but we're, you know, we got, we have the motion going, so.
Sure, I mean, that's still two months ago.
Yeah.
Too close.
Okay.
Good.
Very much, communications, I think everybody saw the memorandum, uh, on council and Dunsmore, I have to go over it. Should've been in your packets. Uh, anybody in conflict, if it interests, if you have not, if you want to, if you get bored and move on. If you wanna comment, if you have a comment or question on it.
That's just a.
Yeah, okay, so. It is in there. Okay, good, once everybody ready? New business, we really don't have any new business. There's nothing there, so we'll move on to unfinished business, which is reviewing the master plan, which is a quick thing. As soon as we get the time. Should have a draft of section eight, I think, Mr. Weaver did, you want to take a moment to read the other, I think we like to add or ask a lot, and then we'll move on to section nine and section ten.
That's from early, oh, I didn't have a, following, from this part. Anybody wants to edit or revise or ask, feel free and sprint that one tomorrow.
What are we, what did you, what was it doing here, well, we can have section nine?
Well, we have, uh, we got the draft of section eight that.
Right, well, that's not really such, section eight is goals, objectives, community, environmental, residential, yeah, so that's the one with this, uh.
Oh, okay, that is, that is. Okay, I'm sorry.
It was an overview, I forget what, how you turn the phrase, I don't remember, but, you know, that was my sign. The way it overview, so I did approximately five lines worth. Hey, you're free to change it. Hang it back.
I saw some.
I think you're making a difference out of here.
Yeah, on section nine, I saw a little corruption.
Okay.
Section nine is, this is the work of the draft, um, I wanted to get something in here, um, because, some, like, some of the head, the headline right, I don't even know where to go with them. So this was just like my best guess, um, on what maybe it should look like or could look like, um, so, if there is anything in here that doesn't make any sense. Please let me know. The only thing I, I, just on the third page, it says making the residential walk, it says east of Pratt Road, which I think maybe, should that say east on Pratt Road or, I'm not sure. There is no, there's an east of Pratt Road, maybe, I don't know what my head was here, east Pratt Road, actually, maybe?
East side of Pratt Road.
East side of Pratt Road.
About this side here, yeah.
That goes, Pratt Road's east of us, so.
Yeah, east Pratt Road, maybe that's what you, yeah, cause there are some, uh, bridges, so, but empties. Yeah, and I don't think that would sell, they're just empty. Alright, so we'll just skip into the whole, and just say east Pratt Road.
How many lots did you think around the side of the street here?
Alright.
How many lots did you think around that side of the street, these Pratt?
Well, one was for sale forever, um, that never sold, and then, um, there's a, there's a parcel there, then, it's just like all the woods. I don't even know who owns it, I believe that runs from Pratt Road all the way down to Horton, but there's a thirty year old sign over there that says for sale, but I don't really think it's for sale. So I don't know, I don't know what, if, if that could be developed, I really, I'm not sure what the condition of that property is. But, but for sure, there's that one, that one is then for sale forever, and then they took it for sale soon.
That's the size of your lot or something bigger or smaller?
So that one is. It's a two thirds of an acre, maybe, it's not real big, but they were asking quite a bit of money for that little lot.
Gaks up to the river, right?
Yeah, there's, there's some over.
It's on the north side, it's on the north side.
Yeah, the gaks up to the river, yeah, if we go back for a. Like where Horton's house is?
No, 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 no.
No, I'm saying, hit that general area?
No, this is, this is way before that, way before Horton's house, it's over by, um. You know where the landscaper, the landscaper's house is? It's about halfway between Main Street and Danvers, fuck, it's on the north side. And they had it for sale for two, three, four years, just.
Now that's just, that's just basically.
Well, size gone, somebody else come and cut the grass. Um, and then, when, like I said, that big section there, I don't know who owns it, I don't know if it's buildable, you know, it's just all Russian trees. So I, I really don't know much about that.
First one, it's uh, it's named Tom or something like that, it's got that big barn right there next to us, huh?
Tom Carens, I live next door to him.
Oh, okay.
It's farther east of that.
Kind of walk down there, like.
I think it's, it's actually over by where that other vacant land is, it's just to the east of where that, where that big section is, it's not tended to. Eric, do we have any maps that'll show all the, like, vacant land within, within the city limits?
I've lived in Denver, it's, uh, map with all the property, the dumpers.
Amber, one thing, I wanna look at the downtown underutilization, so you said emphasis downtown for its potential, but suffers from vacant buildings and persistent traffic and lack of investment. Another thing it suffers from is businesses that are not actually bringing business to town, like, they don't have a big, uh, storefront or something, you know, they're just doing whatever.
Speaking of downtown, does anyone know what's going in that corner, store, can, they've applied for what is it, or?
They've not applied for.
Oh, I thought it was pizza.
They've not applied for anything for that department.
Oh, it's really weird.
Which.
It's progress.
What are you, what are you doing over there?
Well, technically, they shouldn't be doing anything if they didn't like the health market. That you have to submit your plans if you're, you're done, I shut up, cleaning it up.
On the outside, yeah.
On the outside.
On the outside, yeah.
So, but what, don't worry, it's like, it's all covered.
I know, they redid the floor before the, uh, uh, barbecue place, like.
Who, who owns it, or? Maybe it's just. Mars, maybe, huh?
They might just be cleaning it to rent it, I don't know.
Yeah, so the paper, you gotta get this up and you, the headlines, uh, this stuff there's not gonna make sense, but. You know, what the overall statement is. Let me know, that's really great. But I figured it was at least something to put in there, but.
It's, it's a good start, yeah.
Just that, yeah.
It's progress.
Yeah, fine.
Like, any of the challenges in the, in the, there's a full set of them.
I tried to, I tried to leave this home, you know, obviously, we're all from just, you know, just sit here and try, just, you know, I know that's concerning the last, the last right. It was, it was, it wasn't really that.
I would add into the strategic location that M nineteen is a vibrant thoroughfare to anyone heading north.
Okay, what was, what was warning?
The strategic location, M nineteen, uh, you know, I mean, downtown street, was a vibrant thoroughfare through, you know, for anyone traveling from, you know, Detroit or areas south, go heading north. I get so many people, they're like, oh, we're on our way home, or we're on our way back, and they stop, right, you know, so it's a, there's potential therapy, have businesses to make people stop.
Right. Well, the winery actually.
The winery is, is a big one, we got.
People will travel to the winery, you know, you got taverns all over the place, you got, like, you know, people will come from neighboring areas for the ice cream, but people will travel all over for wineries.
They probably don't.
I see like major references, I just, I just talked to somebody on the west side about the, about State Street and the man achievement that we had between that and Dog House, now they're looking to come. State Street, I grew up in there, just part of, I got there, you know. I have friends in North Branch, and they drive their, um, side by sides, so, they come down the corridors and everything, to Canada here, like, two weeks ago, here at State Street and Dog House.
It's like this, I don't know, front, that money.
There's no more than that.
The building, that's for self, the, just what is it?
Cause that was like, when I, when I bought the doghouse, it was a penalty box, you know, we, like, I got no incentives to make it look nice, you know, I think it was nothing available, so that'll be a good thing for.
Right. Sure, yeah. I can think of a couple businesses on there, yeah.
So we have had some, several old buildings that have been revitalized, I think we should mention that, you know, cause that's already kind of gone, you know.
Right.
The Artic Queens, they bought the old I D A, um, we did that.
Right.
You know, uh, the Mason Hall, that's been redone, historical building, you know, so there have been some buildings that have that. We just, we wanna continue, but it's really what we really wanna say.
Right.
Well, see, like, all this stuff just basically says. You know, like, yeah, it's our talent, yes, we do have cities, and a lot of them are aging, but we, you know. Maybe we wanna just continue things, maybe, uh, under the strength of the downtown, you know, maybe continue. You know, and create, improve the pedestrian experience, you know, so we wanna, we wanna merge more outdoor, dining markets and other events. Some of that is already being done, in the State Street doing that summer fest and fall fest, and, um, you know, during festivals, you know, a lot of times, they have stuff at the school, or. You know, we wanted to start, you know, maybe do more markets and things like that.
I think the markets would be a good idea, even at the Lions Field, the, over there.
Well, they did, they did that last year at the Lions, they did have a small number show, Denver, you know, area over there, which was good.
Army did something, food truck fair.
I've seen a lot of cities with food truck fairs like that.
Yeah, they just bring the food trucks in, they just line them up.
And they, I lived live music, or something?
Yeah, live music and stuff, yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun.
I lived in Knoxville Law School, and they had a, um, now Knoxville's huge, but they had a massive farmer's market, and it was cool, you get anything you wanted there, and then they had like, um, spores come in and have. It looks like a food truck, but they were just handing out over days, you know, you buy, okay, a lot of it was cool.
So we have the Lions Field, it's. Farmer's Market.
I think a lot of that would be, I mean, now that playing convention really has much to do with it, that install, like, probably chamber, inner chambers.
Well, that's sort of like, you say, lots of start it, not just business, like, we, we have a chamber, we want to, we have road, the chamber, it's already what we want, people should wanna, you know, cause the chamber puts on the festival. So, maybe more business participation in the chamber.
More knowledge.
Right. So maybe we need to, you know, kind of look at our chambers, like, what incentives can they, you know, can really give to businesses, you know, to get them to. Be more active in, in our community. So workforce development, the school already does have. Workforce development, so, uh, I get somebody from the school almost every year, so that is, that is available, so the school already does have it, we'll need to open that up to more businesses in town, though.
Like I said, I think this is really just a draft, I want to be able to throw it in, you know, make changes, cause I think at least having something in front of us, like decides where we wanna go or we don't wanna go, so. That was my mind.
Am I taking that? Well, I think a lot of, some of this is gonna be, it's like, a little too aggressive.
Verger.
Yeah, cause there's no way we can take on all of this, so.
Right, right, right.
But I think what we need to look at is, like what you have, you know, working with the parks and recs, like we can get with them, um, and go over that section for the recreation plan, um, transportation infrastructure, uh, zoning. We're gonna look at what we currently have for zoning, cause I think we do have several areas that are looking zoned for what you say here, so we need to look at that. Isn't there another section that looks at that for being?
So section six, um, this is the last section that we, that I would consider good, um, I just haven't had kind of, um, trying to do it on the next, the next.
Well, according to the last meeting, that's what Steve was supposed to work on, was the natural features section.
That's what I said, for a draft, in fact. General overview, rest of the people wanna add to it, whatever. Add it, bring it back to the table. That is just a draft.
Everybody got their copy of what was in the draft, so they add to it. Any changes?
I really like this as far as like the history because of breakfast, um, I think when it comes down like where the natural features are, just like these were the headlines, so I like, I wanna be able to, I posted something to that, um, I, I'm trying to work this one, I don't know. I don't know enough about like libraries or what, so I'm like, I don't.
Yeah, I think.
This is a hard session.
The owner is somebody adding to it, absolutely, this is real great.
Right, right, right.
I mean, maybe it would be the river.
Well, I don't even know where those headlines came up because they're about in the hundred people last one.
And I don't, I don't know where they came from either.
Yeah, cause so section six is future land use, um, in the old one. So I've kind of been comparing the two.
Yeah, from, from our other one, there was more sections added.
You know. Like one instruction community profile, that's all, existing land uses zoning, infrastructure, transportation, community services, like I don't know where. So that's totally different, this is a different objective. And then natural features, you know.
And I think if this section is small enough, you know, you can, or you can add somewhere else where we, where we fit. I don't think it hasn't had a separate section.
No, well, I mean, that's, this is kind of a overview, which is already kind of in a lot of these other sections. Like it's saying the same thing, this is basically on Wikipedia, a lot of it is, you know.
It's not Wikipedia, I wrote that myself, you know, you know, don't use chat, you can.
Well, I have a lot of the station stuff that's already stated, you know, where we're located, what's around us, things like that, so. You know, we don't.
Open to your editing, so just go ahead and change the original one, bring it back.
If we don't need this natural features section, I don't know where that came from. Is that, is this, is this the?
I think that was the beginning stage, um, for when, um, Terry had it. So I think that was where she was working on. This is our original here.
This is our. I like the community, community services, you know, like that, that talks about what we do, we have here, um.
Yeah, but I think, you wrote section five, like, when I got into, um, Dropbox, I looked at the email that sent photographs ahead of it, so I think we drafted section five and seven, and then eight.
It was all in Dropbox.
Right, yeah, cause, but I just did nine to ten, you know, now it's, it's section six, so, um, maybe we could flush everything out, I mean, everything that's here other than nine and ten, is what it's, you're, I got from photographs.
I think we did, and we did section four here, I forgot what section we did here.
Well, I, yeah, I have section. Oh, I think section three and section four. And one, two, yeah, so really the, I mean, the only section we have nothing for is that natural resources. And you wanna talk about like the fish and wildlife, the products.
Chase has sent a couple of, sent me a couple of things that he just brought up on AI, you know, to do if you want, that's fine. Name the trial studies and this plan, the bad plan. I would look more at just a general overview, a quick, take a look at city of this. Well, I found it interesting when I said pants, but I've just, you know, I write my own stuff.
Well, um, what I think is coming back, I think it's, it's rain. I was coming down M nineteen and there were literally no rakes on the side of the road.
Oh, for old Santa rakes?
Yeah, they got a red thing in the back.
Yeah. Pretty cool. I'm a. They do, they make a lot of those, you know, berries, glass. The other three, I guess, there's a couple of young supply, I think they're probably on a parking lot, they must be more people, some like white people.
For the most annoying sound of the bird.
Their country's works out. Yeah, we have, uh, we have Charlie thirty of them, we're setting up for the ground, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it for the ground, we're on board, and, uh, got four thousand acres, so, which is wildly, yeah, lots of those fires. You hear, you have three, there's solid, even more, it's light, it's wet, it's all my house.
Do you think we need to get some, um, well, back to section, you said that. Yeah, the natural resources, I don't think we really need that, probably scratch that out of there.
Yeah, cause when I look at.
Cause natural resources, like, you know, it's our types of minerals. You know, you know, fish, yeah, you know, kinda fishes are, you know, like trout, they're usually.
Right, trout.
Transformer park, or, or, and it's basically, yeah, there isn't that much in there. I mean, it's not really bluff anymore, it's more of just a.
I mean, like Riley Center, or, or Riley Township, they are master plan hats, um, physical features, and this talks about like their geology. They have a map like where the river runs through, talks about like their water, blood pattern, soil. Soil seability for egg culture.
Stuff, where, where, got the information?
Well, he does.
Is there resources listed?
Um, yeah, I think he has, it's like Brian St. Clair, I don't know how to call it, they have their own, um, maps, and it looks like that's what they hold.
Like the G L O survey map, they got a lot of that stuff on there, D N R is, and that's like the two.
Septet tank absorption pills. They have their weapons.
Actually, there's a lot of flood plain area, I think that was six, I think doesn't matter that how we, don't hire any equipment, unless things got a lot of money, but they're all backed out of this here, and so they'll reserve a lot of stuff there, and then I'm, well, I'm not sure.
I wonder if I saw anything from Memphis. It's not somewhere just in the middle.
You know, Riley's also watch, watch bigger.
Oh, they're huge.
So, I mean, they probably count a lot, what you're talking about.
I mean, yeah, I mean, like I said, once per mile, we have.
Thirty-six, forty-one. Yeah, we have thirty-six, with the exclusion of what we cut into.
Right. So I think we're quite determined.
Yeah, we do a little ball of information, I mean, is it, what's the information in there about it? Okay, great, I can just add to mention there, but I, I'm looking at there, this is a folder, like, thirteen pages. The sections of Riley is thirteen pages. Ours is not being on thirteen pages.
Is that in Dropbox or?
No, this is on, I know I said.
It's on the website, yeah.
Anything else you wanna add to? Alright, sweet. Can I bar, um, can I add anything on that? Anything in regards to, look at all over. Anything in regards to, look at all over. I guess Amber, I mean, we can, I'll try to call out. Call Lions with the central land features for Memphis. I mean, we're only square on the other for St. Clair, so I'll just check the both of them and see if they have something for us. I mean, if they got Riley's in there, they act, they have something about someone inside or another. I wanna reset, I wanna read up on that Riley township one.
I do like the Riley township, it's like vehicle accidents. For point fourteen. They have a map that shows where all the accidents and sign language, it's pretty interesting.
Want to do is ask Boos to control through it all.
I can't open the map, I don't know.
I know you got some left tickets.
Yeah, but I need to be.
I think I've got.
Accidents are a bit far.
Oh, yeah.
Especially if it's a big deal, I, I don't know, I have number one by the time.
No, one, two.
Little square by.
Okay, first thing, we just get that from, uh, from Rock, can't we?
From the chief in regards to.
Probably that little trend girl, it's the only one I know.
The what?
That little trend girl. That motorcycle, that buddy drink.
That was a long time ago.
Kathleen Chubb. It's so weird.
That was a long time ago.
He's in the office, he's a professional. Over at the police department, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Dropbox, I just never seen any of that.
Yeah, that is second chapter.
Okay. That's an idea. So you're passing. Alright, so we'll work on for section six. I'll look in the Dropbox, I can get that. And one, we'll, we'll, yeah. And I'll check with Memphis plan, I'll check with McCallum, I'll check with St. uh, St. Louis, one of those land features. Research the Riley township one. So I just think it adjusts what we need in that, and I'll check with. The police department, my sub-actual morning, she gets there before after seven, that should be good. She's done that, it's gotta be somewhere at eight or at nine o'clock. Alright, we can go there. Any other pointers on the master plan there, we got, got a good hold on that, we can progress on it.
What's next?
Well, we gotta get section, uh, we said we need section six, Amber, you gotta go through on that. Nine, we need to, everybody just uh. Go through nine, Tammy has your rights, I have my rights, anything that needs to be changed, touch base with Amber on that.
So after next month's meeting, when these.
Maybe we should go ahead and share the great rights.
People go and say, are we ready to hand it off to somebody, or, or you, I'm just asking, just wondering.
No, we need to have the final draft figured out because this, whatever this is.
Mm-hmm.
Some of this is still from the last one.
Well, I know there's updated census.
Okay, so that's what I wanna, I wanna have a, I wanna have a full.
You have, you have the rest update? Wanna have another one like that?
So that, yeah, so that we can kind of go through the whole thing.
Okay, well, I know this, we have this in Dropbox, right?
No.
Yes, but my problem with print meant to like do the same format, I don't, I don't know how to get that same format as the first one, whatever section one through three. I don't, I don't know how to do that.
I don't care what format, I just want the.
She just wants something that.
Just, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Just do the draft, right, some of it.
Cause I, I have a feeling that this one, cause I was going through the whole thing, some of them are updated and some seem like they're not. So I don't know if I, we have the right pages in here.
Okay.
So they might be in there now or.
Yeah, yeah, they, they showed me how to locate those last two sections. Once we have section six, then it'll be complete, so, complete as far as there's something for every section.
Something concrete that we can print up as a final draft and everybody can do it. All of the necessary steps. Okay. That works for me. I said, I'll get, I'll touch base tomorrow morning. And if you need anything from me, Amber, just call me, text me, and I always jump down to the house and make you over a couple things. I'm off this weekend, so. Alright, moving on, any comments from the commissioners, I wanna pull up everybody's. Mister Riley.
Helder.
In here? Miss Garber.
Helder here.
Mister Enzal.
No.
Mister Weaver.
No.
Miss Enzal. Helder, Helder.
No.
Okay, Mister Zambou.
No.
Miss Mayer.
No.
Alright, neither do I. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Your motion.
I get a second. Alright, all in favor, aye.
Is that yours?
Alright, we're clear, seven twenty six, eight hundred thirty time.